And if council, when you raised your hand this evening, if you can say aye, just so that the owl will look at you when we need movers and secenders, please. Okay, great. So let's get started. Call this meeting to order. Move by councillor. Peter Kistemaker. Second by councillor Ted Scheneman. Be it resolved that we do call this regular meeting of council to order on Wednesday, October 4th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Those in favor? And that is carried, not opposed. Okay, and I'll hand the meeting over to councillor Belinda Kistemaker. I would ask that the people in the background be quiet, please. I'm sorry, there's people talking in the background that should not be.
The council of the corporation, the township of Hornbane, would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that the land on which we gather here today is the Treaty 9, 1905-1906 Territory, the traditional lands of Indigenous peoples. As we work towards reconciliation, may we all live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples.
Thank you councillor Kistemaker. Item number three is review and note of any changes to the agenda. There's being none. So we'll move on to item number four. Move by councillor.
Aye.
Belinda Kistemaker, second by councillor Ted Scheneman. Be it resolved that council does hereby approve the agenda as presented. Those in favor?
Aye.
And that is carried. Okay, moving on to item number five, declaration of pecuniary interest, declaration of conflict of interest. I don't have any paperwork as of right now for council, but at any time throughout the meeting, council, if such a situation arises, you can declare then as well. Item number six is the adoption of the minutes of our regular meeting on September 20th. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Move by councillor.
Aye.
Peter Kistemaker. Oh, second by councillor Ted Scheneman. I saw Peter's hand there. And it's second by councillor Ted Scheneman. And is there any comments on those minutes? There being none, I'll move it, put it to a vote. Those in favor?
Right.
And that is carried, not opposed. And I would like to acknowledge, I didn't acknowledge at the call to order to the meeting that we are missing councillor Drago Stefanik this evening with regrets. Item number seven is business arising from the minutes. I do have one item from, that I would like to bring up arising that we didn't discuss council and we can discuss future, was we had a roundtable discussion about improving our town hall meetings. And I was thinking that we should have, our town hall should include the information from each town hall to each town hall. So we can have a further discussion on that in the future if council is in agreement. Can I get consensus from council and then we can bring it back to a further meeting? I'm thinking next, next June or when the next town hall is coming closer and we set up all the parameters.
So I'm fine for that?
Okay, sounds good. So moving on to item number eight, tonight we have a deputation and I welcome Mr. David Jeremy to council chambers this evening. And this is regarding maintenance of second government Lake Road. And I welcome David to take the floor.
Where do I stand exactly, or sit, or?
Just front over here.
Where, like?
He'll just stand up.
Okay, but is that camera on because?
The owl will see.
Cheryl's sitting through there. Okay, alright, okay.
And just so you know, David, I will have the time going and I'll knock when there's a two-minute window left for you.
Okay, well, let's get started right away then. So the first thing I'm going to, Cheryl, you can hear me?
I can, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just gonna step over, we won't start the time.
Okay, alright, very good, very good.
You had two links wanted me to open?
Yeah.
So one was the municipal act?
Yeah.
And then the other one is the printout, right?
Yeah, but the mayor will lead that.
It's on agenda.
Oh, it's on agenda, okay, well, then she's got a copy, there's no blanking out of it.
So I will share.
You're sharing now, so.
Okay, yes.
Not ready to start for the whole term, I mean.
No.
Please, 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 that's another demand.
Okay, all right. Thank you council for taking a few minutes to listen to me tonight. First of all, I may refer you to the rest of council, just in recognition of how complex of an issue this is. Even though I suspect I know what the answer is, I'm gonna ask for more time to this deputation because we're talking about a fairly complex issue with an awful lot of information. So my first request is that I don't get cut off at the 10 minutes if I'm not done, and I will leave that with council to determine whether that's appropriate or not.
Well, I'm gonna clarify that right now, David. David, I'd like to clarify that right now. The time will be 10 minutes, a lot, an extra minute for the setting things up right now, but it will be 10 minutes. Continue.
Okay, well, I will, okay, thank you. And I will publicly state that that's really not an appropriate amount of time to discuss this issue.
You have to come back.
However, however, we will.
We, we're not gonna have an argument tonight. We did have public discussion, open discussion on this and it's already an allowance for council to be doing this, so continue.
All right, we'll come back to that. So the first thing I want to say is that I'm not here representing anybody. I'm here as a taxpayer in the municipality of Hornbane, who also happens to own property in a lesser township. A little historical context of second government Lake Road. The road was built by the municipality, also funded many years ago by tourism organizations to help turn it into a road that was in much better shape. But it has been built and maintained by the municipality and it's within the municipal boundaries, the vast majority of it, ninety, ninety-seven percent, for the better part of 50 years, perhaps even 75 years. I just wanna make sure, I'm not here to argue that point, that's just an historical fact. It's a geographical fact that this road is within the municipality, as you can see on your map, right almost to where the road ends. Did a quick measurement, it's, might be 200 meters out of, 200 meters more of the road that's out of the municipality. Just a quick little bit of landowner data at second government lake, and this is just quick. I wasn't able to check with every single soul, but there are 37 properties on second government lake. Seventeen out of 37, or 45%, and it actually may be 18 out of 37. I'm waiting for an answer from one person. Are also taxpayers within the municipality. Ten out of 37 are full-time residents of second government lake. Who also access goods and services in town, supporting local businesses and have done so for many years in supporting local employment. Twenty-seven are seasonal owners who support local business anywhere from three to six months out of the year. Two property owners are also indigenous and have treaty rights to the land. Township of boundaries, as I've already spoken about, the road goes primarily to, a little bit past the boat launch. For those of you who are familiar with the area, if you've driven out there and you know where the public boat launch is, the town line goes just a little bit past that boat launch. So the road is primarily in the municipality. There is a link in the municipal act and I'm not a municipal lawyer, as everybody knows, nor am I an expert in municipal affairs. However, municipal act does reference road maintenance of municipal roads, and it is a municipal road. It also references the fact that if road maintenance is not maintained properly, that the township is liable under the liability act. I'm sure you've spoken to your lawyer about this, but I think it's an important point to point out. How much time do I have, so we're in?
You've got seven, or sorry, yes, seven minutes.
Seven minutes, that, okay. I'm sorry I'm speaking very quickly because.
No, you're doing fine.
You've got limited time. I've also got a lot of information you're all gonna receive in the package after this as well. So one of my big issues with this whole concept is double billing of municipal taxpayers. I'm a municipal taxpayer and have been for 35 years, some have been for three years longer. And as you all know, we pay a high degree municipal taxes. Phenomenal when you tell people what kind of money you pay. So I'm paying municipal tax. Part of my municipal taxes go to maintain that road, which is in the municipality. So now you're saying to me, because I happen to own a piece of property in another township, that I'm gonna pay twice now and pay my municipal taxes. And we know we're not getting, we know we're not getting a $3 reduction when you manage to do this. My taxes are not going down. So my taxes are not going down and I'm paying for that road. And then because I happen to own a piece of property outside the municipality, you're gonna double bill me. You're setting myself up and other owners as second-class citizens, because we happen to own property, we're gonna get double billed. That's one of the big concerns I have. Fire service is a big issue to me. That road is within the municipality and it's my understanding that it's council's policy that the fire truck will respond to emergencies within the municipality. I know they don't respond to emergencies outside of municipality, which is perfectly understandable. So if that road ends up falling into disrepair because of the lack of maintenance, worried about the ability to respond to an accident, whether it be a tourist who's going in and out that road, or the multitude of people who use that road, taxpayers, municipal taxpayers, other people who use that road on a regular basis 12 months out of the year. So if you drive out that road, you'll see on each of the little side roads, there's a little GL and a number, and that's a 911 number. So if you happen to get in an accident that what used to be the years ago was the old dump, and then for a while was the rod and gun club that says RL, or sorry, GL 79 or something like that, that's a 911 address. You're putting that service at risk, I think, by doing this. It's one of my, one of my concerns. There is a precedent of road maintenance. Municipality has been maintaining this road to a really high degree for a long, long time. And again, I'm not a lawyer and I'm sure your lawyer will be able to reflect on it. But I did come across an article from 2014 in the municipal affairs blog or magazine or something about a case that had come somewhere in southeastern Ontario with a municipality that had periodically maintained a road. And they did it for a bit, but it was more as a favor to the taxpayer who was living at the end of the road. And then they stopped maintaining it and there was an accident and there was a lawsuit. And the judge said that as a result of the road only periodically being maintained, and in this case it was once in a while when it needed something, that they didn't necessarily have a responsibility, but that the opposite was true, that the municipality, if they have established a regular maintenance of a road, which municipality has for, I mean certainly for 50 years that I know of, and quite possibly longer than that, I think you have a precedent to maintain that road. Perhaps there's an argument for less maintenance of it, but you have, you have a responsibility, I believe, to maintain that road. And because I'm probably running out of time, what I do wanna say is if you look on your map, that little section that is outside of the municipality, well, I don't speak for any of those people. I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt, there's not a single one of those people who expects the town property to be maintaining that road outside of the municipal lands, not a soul. They're perfectly willing to pay for what's outside of the municipality. And I certainly am. It's far as the road that goes down to the north. I can't speak for any of those people. However, the majority of that road, I didn't include that in the map because I'm not advocating for anybody else. Majority of that road is also within the municipality. Okay, the last ratepayer concept. It seems to have been the concept that was brought up. Last ratepayer is right here, boom, that we're gonna stop maintaining, even though it's within the municipality. I don't think it's the last ratepayer. I think that's the bell tower. But that's up to you guys to decide. And I'm really curious if you're going to apply that same principle to every other road in the municipality.
Yeah.
Because, for example, Becker Road, your last, your last ratepayer is right there by the cemetery. Now, I know you have the dump and the transfer site and I know all of that. I've got two minutes. Okay, I hope you're gonna apply the same principle. I hope you're gonna charge those people also for that part of the road maintenance, not just a little bit. I hope you're gonna charge people who go to KB. I hope you're gonna charge people that go to Larkin Lake. And how are you gonna do that? People access KB River on that road all the time. Okay, two minutes, so I'm gonna run it, I'm gonna run it. Okay. So here's the big problem, probably the problem that I have, the biggest of all this. You want me and the rest of the people to pay for this road because you feel it's unfair. Okay. How are you gonna stop anybody else in the municipality from using that road? Because it's not fair. You're gonna make me pay for the road. You can drive out it, Tyler can drive out it, Beck can drive out it, Pete, you can drive, well, you can all drive out that road. You can bring your boat out to the boat launch. You can go out all during the winter time. How is that remotely fair? That everybody else in the municipality can use that road? We're gonna be paying for it. Just because we happen to own property outside of two other municipalities. Just because we happen to own property. Are you gonna be doing the same for everybody who wants to go to the KB? Everybody wants to drive out through, everybody wants to go to Penhurst, everybody who wants to go to Macduff. Are you, are you gonna do the same thing? I don't think you're going to. I think it's a really convenient thing to say, those people at second government lake, they just wanna get out of the township and they don't wanna pay taxes. So we're gonna make them pay for that. So are you putting, are you putting the gate up? Are we putting the gate up so that none of the rest of you can use that road? Because I'll tell you right now, if three to seven people have to pay for that road, I don't see why it would be fair that anybody else can use it. The municipality is no longer maintaining. I have a solution. I don't know, I'm gonna try really hard to get to the solution. Apparently, I might have one extra minute. Okay, and I've got, no, I gotta go to ethical concerns before I go to the solution.
Sorry, the timer's going off now.
Do I have one extra minute or not?
No, that's including the extra minute.
Oh, this, thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Please don't, please don't leave. We do have, we do have questions for council. So I think the first question is, the two items you wanted to address. You wanted to address something first before you went to the solution. Could you do that now, please?
Yes, I wanna talk about, not, I talked about the legality of it, now I wanna talk about the ethics of it. Do you really want to stop maintaining this road and put at risk people's lives? Who are gonna be going out there, who are flying in and out of lodges all the time, some people who live out there full-time. Do you really, for $27,000, which is not even really a good number, it could be significantly lower, do you wanna put people's lives at risk who are not gonna be able to get an ambulance? Because, is that really what you want? That's for you to decide, not for me to decide. You've got a lot of ethical concerns about that. There is already one person who lives out there who was deciding to move into town because she's terrified an ambulance is not gonna get to her. Okay, so that's, that's an ethical question. The council has to answer.
Okay, and your solution? And what was your solution, David?
Yeah, okay, so my solution, suggested solution at this time is, first of all, there's no time for you guys to get all this organized. Try to force us into a cottage association, which is not going to happen. I suggest that you continue to maintain the road. It doesn't have to be as you have. As a matter of fact, the grader has been out that road three dozen times. Yeah, so often, and then now the last of the while it hasn't been, for whatever reason. Road's still not in bad shape. I would suggest that you come up with, and I mean obviously the road superintendent is gonna be the gentleman that I can come up with, come up with. Maintain it less and take a look at your municipal standards as to what has, what has to be maintained. And go through the year and see what it costs. And then at the end of the year, we can have this discussion again. That's what I think would be fair. But if, if you want the ethical challenges of something like that coming out, do you wanna support tourism in this community? I've been told you do. It's in the CIP. If you have to pass, if, if the people that own tourist businesses, many of whom are also taxpayers in the community, they have to pass their higher save, their higher costs on to their tourists, their tourists might end up saying it's a lot easier to fly out of White River. That's just one example for, for like, a lot easier to fly out of White River, save two hours of driving. Your $150,000 in your motel six is not gonna be quite as good because you're gonna have less people staying at your motel. All your businesses are going to have less business. The gentlemen, the ladies and gentlemen that own some of those lodges, they come in all the time, they go, they go to the hardware store, they go to the grocery store. You're gonna be cutting off your nose despite your face.
Okay, thank you for that, David. I'm gonna open up the floor for questions from council. And council, you'll have to state your name and then I'll address you, please. Are there any questions from council at this time?
Got a couple. I just want a certain argument.
Madam Mayor?
It won't be an argument, I guess.
Councillor Ted Scheneman, you're okay to have the floor?
Madam Mayor, I think we should probably, in all fairness, not respond until we've gone over with our solicitor to make sure that we don't put ourselves at a liability by saying something that we shouldn't. I think we should accept Mr. Jeremy's submissions, take his advice and to council. But I believe we need to wait until we are satisfied that we don't open our mouth and put our foot in it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Scheneman. There's still the opportunity for council to ask Mr. Jeremy any questions that you have on his presentation. If there's anything lingering in your mind that he spoke about or anything like that, you're welcome to ask him now for clarification. While you're thinking of those questions, I do have a few questions, David. You mentioned in your presentation that you're going to be sending us further documents?
Yeah, well, not documents, just, there's so much more that has to be said and investigated with this, with this topic that can't be done in 10 minutes. So yeah, I'm just, I'm gonna submit a whole bunch of stuff, the stuff that I would have gone through and explained in more detail, but I can't because you won't give me the time.
Well, I definitely wanna see those documents and for accountability and transparency, they will be published on our agenda. How much time do you need to gather your information?
I can send it tomorrow. It's already gathered. I've got it.
Okay, so it'll, it'll.
I was hoping I would be giving, I was hoping I would be given a little more time so that I could go into it in a little more detail because each one of those, those points that I brought up, and I didn't even get to all of my points, each, each one of them need to be looked at in a lot more detail.
Yeah.
Including, does the bell tower, does the bell tower pay taxes? And if they are, that, that's your last. I mean, that's your last ratepayer right there. And then that gets us into the conversation about the turnaround, which from the last council meeting was determined to be at the bell tower, or maybe they don't want you turning around their property. You know what I'm saying? Like, there's so much more.
Okay, so it, once you get the documents into us, we'll put them under information only so that other people that are watching this council meeting or have interest can see what was submitted. And council will take all of those pieces of information into consideration. And I'm gonna open up the floor again.
But I'm gonna be very honest, if it's not gonna spur another conversation, there's not much point in doing it and it, it sort of defeats your purpose, your, your claim of transparency because it's not. It's just not. If there's not gonna be further discussion about it. Like, if you're really gonna limit it to a 10-minute conversation, don't even pretend you're being transparent about it because you're not.
Okay, we've had public discussion, open public discussion on this issue. Council made a decision to look into this further. We have not made a final decision. We don't do anything at this table without data and research. And I think, and that is why we have allowed the floor for deputations on this issue. And for accountability and transparency, everyone should see those documents. So if you could submit them, we will put them on information only and we will consider them. And I would suggest at another deputation, have them ahead of time. It may garner more questions from council as well. So I open up the floor again to council.
You, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead councillor Kistemaker, Peter.
I think what would be helpful too is if, for a lot of the questions and things that Mr. Jeremy has doubts about, I think we should be able to answer them in writing as like, you know, like cottage association that was never mentioned. That was an idea brought up, but that's not any of our business. No, no, but you, you, sir, excuse me.
Okay. Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Continue.
You said, you said none of this could happen without one. Well, I'm telling you right now, one's not happening. I don't know where.
Okay, continue councillor, David. Can you please refrain from talking, David, please? Refrain from talking. Okay, councillor Kistemaker, continue.
There was that, the reference to Becker Road. I think that there should be an answer given about that, but that the mill is paying indeed quite a bit.
Okay.
Well, and then, see, this is, you know, you know why, let's just, we'll, we'll answer in writing, it'll be easier. The motions are running high.
It's no motion, dear.
No. Okay, this is not an open discussion. It's closed now. I am sorry. I'm closing the conversation right now. Thank you, Mr. Jeremy, for your presentation. And I will wrap up by saying that we have not made a final decision. We are in information gathering and research of these areas within our municipality. We're doing a minimum maintenance standards for our entire municipality and we have to look at every corner of every part of the municipality. So I thank you for bringing your concerns and I hope that in the future you'll see another meeting of discussion for this. you'll see another, uh, meeting of discussion for this. And please keep abreast of what is happening at council table. There's not, no firm decision has been made until we have legal consultation and we know how to go move forward. Thank you.
And I will be quite happy to return and discuss this in further detail.
Thank you, Counselor, or thank you, Dave. And council, this, uh, discussion item is already on a, uh, upcoming agenda, so it will be discussed then as well. So moving on. We have the departmental reports. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please, so we can open up the floor. Moved by Counselor Peter Kistemaker, second by Counselor
Aye.
Ted Sheniman. Be it resolved at the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpan does hereby acknowledge receipt of the departmental reports provided at the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-three. And I hand the floor over to Eileen. Do you have anything further you'd like to add to your report, Eileen?
Uh, no, I do not, but I can take any questions, uh, from council.
Thank you. I will open up the floor for council for any questions for the CIO. Okay, I'm not seeing any at this time. I do have one question, Eileen, just for clarification, because we did have that bell outage, uh, this weekend. Did Bell indicate at all that it had anything to do with their improvements to the fiber within our community?
No, they, the last time I spoke to them, they did not know the reason. And I, I will follow up with them and see if I can uh, find a reason, but the few times I did speak to them, they, they were still investigating and they had not, um, discovered what had caused the outage.
Okay. And I want to, uh, thank and acknowledge all the work that Eileen did this weekend in managing the outage from our perspective and trying to keep things informed and trying to get answers. It was, uh, quite stressful. Thank you, Eileen. And I have no further questions on the CIO's report. So we'll move on to the Client Service Manager Treasures Report. Melissa, do you have anything you'd like to add to your report?
I do, actually. I received, um, an email today from CMHC who asked for clarification on some of the items, um, in the half application. And they also advised that the housing needs and demand study is dated prior to April seventh, twenty twenty, and will not be eligible to get points during the assessment of the application for the housing study.
Okay. Just a clarification on that in our application, then we indicated we were trying to get points for it then? Was that just an oversight?
No, we just, um, submitted it along with the application, but it needs to be updated and we, we indicated that in our application.
Okay, and they, they are well aware that council is going to update every five years?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you, Melissa. So I open up the floor for any questions from council on the Client Service Manager Treasures Report. So in discussion, uh, when we did our agenda meeting, we were talking about, uh, page one of two of strategic plan updates, talking about utilization of gift cards for website usage and trying to garner more support and drive, uh, interest into signing up for calendar and updates, the news notifications. In our discussion, we thought it would be prudent to acknowledge all the people that did sign up initially. And, uh, and then continue from there. I'm not sure, was there a decision made on when your first draw will be conducted?
Uh, we're still working on it.
Okay.
Sure.
Go ahead, Eileen.
Sorry, uh, I just wanted to mention that we're still working on it. We don't have an exact date. It should be coming up fairly soon. And, uh, like a notice, a pop-up alert will be posted on our website. For both draws. Yeah.
Okay, hopefully that garnered more interest and get people informed. Is there any other questions from council? I did have a question when we were in our agenda meeting as well about the red extension. If that was going to hinder or if it would go smoothly. And Melissa, you had indicated that it should go smoothly, that we had talked with our advisor ahead of time?
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you. One other item that I'd like to draw atten- attention to is the destruction of lands that are up for sale by public tender. I did check some of the lands and the one that I was concerned about was thirty-three Third Avenue. I'm not sure which property that is. Could you clarify? Or sorry, thirty-three Front Street, not Third. It came up on local maps as Third, that's why. Okay. And the other, uh, concern that I had was that within these two, within these properties, there's two properties that are occupied. And we've never had that within our municipality, I believe, to this point. And I'm quite concerned about it. When are we, um, and there's been no further discussion on this, uh, from my end, I was just, uh, had thought about it over the night. When we created this bylaw of how we would proceed with tax sale and tax registration, did we come across this in any of the research of what other municipalities do at this time? Uh, through Eileen to the treasurer, if she can remember even?
This isn't through a bylaw. This is the municipal regulations.
Okay, and are we fall, so we're following it detailed? And do any other municipalities um, have any other situations of what happens at this point?
If somebody, if somebody buys the property and it's occupied, the township doesn't have, um, doesn't have the doesn't have to provide vacant possession and it's up to the property owner to hire a bailiff or whatnot to have the property the occupancy removed from that property. They no longer own it when they buy it through tax.
Okay, thank you for that, Melissa. So I just want to highlight that for council. It's, uh, a bit disturbing. Counselor Sheniman, do you have your hand up?
Oh, it's me, Madam Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Kistemaker, Peter.
Through you, Madam Mayor, um, to the treasurer. So when you set the minimum tender bids, this is just, uh, how is the guidelines for that? How do you usually set those up?
It's the amount that's owing on.
Okay, okay, gotcha. And how long do they have to be up on for bid?
Till October twenty fifth.
Of this year?
Yeah, four, four weeks.
Okay, thanks.
And then after that, they go into our surplus property? Is that correct?
Um, we, it's up to council to, uh, vest them if they want to, or we can hold them and we can do another tax sale within a year of the closing. And then, uh, after that, well, it's up to council discretion. We can either vest them in the township or do nothing at all.
Okay, will there, will there be a report coming to council after the, uh, the October twenty-fifth deadline? Outlining our steps?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we'll move on. Thank you, Melissa. And it's to the Public Works Managers Report. And I can't readily see if Dwayne is actually in council chambers.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Dwayne, would you like to speak to your report before I open up the floor for questions?
Sure, just want to add, uh, one more demolition is underway right now at forty-one Fourth Avenue. It's ninety percent cleaned up. It's down, ninety percent cleaned up.
Fantastic. Okay, I'll open up the floor for questions for the Public Works Manager. Hey, I'm not seeing any at this time. I do have, uh, one question, Dwayne, is once the properties that are up till October twenty-fifth, so some of those properties, there could be derelict. My question is, how do we, are we, what type of metric are we using to decide which properties come down first?
Hmm. Kind of where the, basically where the excavator is or the next, the next move I'm making is, uh, we're going to do a service on the excavator and then we're going to go into winter, so I got a few ones lined up with no basements, so it'll be easy to take down. I'm going to try to go a little longer in the season if I can.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I just, I just realized I missed one of my notes from the last, uh, report. And I'd like to just, uh, go back to that. It was one oh one Front Street is on the tax sale as well. And it's showing the property adjacent or down from the pavilion. And I'm just, I want a clarification if that's the actual property. I was just confused because I thought we had taken all of that property off.
No, it's not.
Okay, so where is one oh one Front Street located?
Um.
We'll just Google it.
Yeah.
Well, the Google is showing that our, it's our property. That's why I want clarification. I just want clarification that it's not that property. I don't need to know which property is. Okay, thank you. Okay, and I, uh, one final question for you, Dwayne, is I see that, um, oh, I can't find it in your report right now. It talked about demolition or yeah, taking steps to rehabilitate or remove derelict buildings? I was wondering what rehabilitate, which ones were rehabilitating?
Hmm, nothing on the thing. It's just a step. That's the, uh, off of the strategic plan. That's the.
Okay. Okay, so that's just the title that's underneath that S, on the SDR or the co, uh, is it the SDR or the strap plan?
Strap plan, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Go ahead, Eileen.
Um, I just wanted to go back to my report because I forgot to mention this earlier, but, um, I do have a information on there that, uh, there's been a reduced speed, um, that's been granted by the Ministry of Transportation. And it's now forty kilometers on a certain stretch of the connecting links highways, the highway six thirty-one. Um, and, uh, you had asked in that agenda review, Mayor Fort, if we had, um, like the forty kilometers per hour upcoming sign. And we, we actually, the Public Works Manager was able to confirm that those signs are off.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. And thank you for that, Eileen. And I just, uh, for full clarity, I'm using a new method to try and keep my notes together here. And it's not as work, it's not as easy as I thought it was going to be. But thank you for that. And I do like, I want to say that I do like the big new sign on the, the first one that I saw where the forty kilometer starts. Okay, so any further questions on the project manager's report or public manager's report? Okay, there being none. I'll put that, uh, motion to a vote to acknowledge receipt. Those in favor? And that is carried. Then opposed. Okay, moving on to correspondence action items. The first one is a donation request from the Hornpan Snowmobile Club. Eileen, do you want to speak to this first?
Um, yeah, I can give council just, uh, some further information, um, just in regards to this donation request and what we have, what the township has available. Um, we have about five hundred dollars left in our, uh, donation funds reserve, I guess, for twenty twenty-three. Um, and, uh, I believe, Mayor Fort, you had asked in our agenda review, uh, possibly where the donation may come from. And I can advise council that it would come from the community, uh, it could come from the community well-being um, reserve as we have twenty-three, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and three dollars and forty-three cents in there. And, sorry, just to add, we, this is where we also usually take out our funds for our annual Christmas party.
And just to further clarify, I saw that the municipal grants policy was put on the agenda as well and it, this donation does align, it aligns with that grant policy?
Sorry, you, ye- yes, it does.
Okay, yeah. So I open up the floor for council discussion. Counselor Peter Kistemaker, go ahead.
I'm good with the five hundred dollar donation if we have it to give because it's for a good cause and, uh, I would even go further by if we can offer up some help from our end. Whether it be with, uh, I don't know if there's any gravel or anything like that, it needs to be hauled over, but something in that we could help out.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Kistemaker. Any further comments from Counselor Sheniman or Kistemaker? Counselor Kistemaker, Belinda, go ahead.
I just want some clarification. Do you need like two thousand dollars even? Is that what you're just looking for?
No, that, that was just a, that just a ask.
Okay.
That's just the ask. That's what we're estimated costs. We've already purchased a lumber from the lumber mill.
Okay.
And we haven't received the, the invoice, but by the time we buy all the hardware, um, we may have to have some disposal of the lumber, the old lumber, so that again, we have dump fees and those kinds of things. So we estimate at two thousand, that's materials without cost of any labor at all, all done by volunteers. But, uh, gravel would definitely give us a huge hole on the other side, which has been a problem for year-round, so that's definitely welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm just going to remind council that we're going to have discussion with council, please.
Sorry.
That's all right, Counselor Kistemaker. I enjoyed listening to the answer. So, um, Counselor Kistemaker, Belinda? What is So, um, Councilor Kistemaker, Belinda, what is your consideration on the donation amount?
I do like $500, and I do like, if we can support some other way, that's great, so, yes, I'm tuned to that. That's a bridge that is, that is used quite, but been stuck on the other side.
Councilor Ted Scheneman, do you have a comment?
I'm fine with, uh, if we do a $500 donation, I'm fine with that, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would, um, I would suggest that we do the entire donation out of our community wellbeing. That would be my suggestion, and, um, I, um, I'm not sure what the donation policy says about in-kind for the gravel. I have no problem if it falls within the donation policy, that we could give that in-kind gravel as well. I think that would be, um, beneficial to all of our community members and everyone that visits. I would suggest that we take it out of the community wellbeing, and I make a further suggestion that we actually look at this during our budget, that we put a certain amount with, we only have, I believe, $1,000 budgeted for donations, and we usually give that amount to the annual Christmas party for the children. So I think there's two items here, is, um, if council is in agreement with that, taking it out of the community wellbeing for this complete donation, and if we can do the gravel, I am totally in agreement with that. And then also looking at our upcoming budget and making a larger donation pot, so that we're insured to cover at least the donations we do annually. Further discussion now, council. Councilor Peter Kistemaker, go ahead.
No, I'm good with that, like, like that idea.
And I just want to get clarification, there was over 22,000 left, right, in the community wellbeing?
Yeah, it's 20, $23,103.43.
Councilor Belinda Kistemaker or Councilor Ted Scheneman, do you have comment on that?
No, I'm fine to go with the consensus, Madam Mayor.
I'm fine.
Are you both, are you both fine with 2,000 out of community wellbeing? I think we all wanted to, I think we all were willing to max out our budget amount, but we're going to have to have further discussion, because we do, you can see the, thank you to the staff for listing out the donations that we've given since 2019, and putting that information for council?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we have the donation request in front of us, and I'll insert 2,000. And the expense from community wellbeing. And do we need to adjust, uh, I looked for clarification from the deputy clerk or clerk, do we need to adjust for allowance of the gravel?
I was just going to me- mention that I think we'll need to look into that a bit for, or, never mind, the deputy clerk is working on it right now.
Okay, perfect, thank you for that.
And sorry, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead, Eileen.
It's the, it's the, um, when you read it out, it's the Community Wellbeing Reserve.
Reserve, okay, thank you for that. And I think we'll do a joint read, so I'll read, and then the deputy clerk can read the portion, the addition, and then I'll finish off, if that's acceptable?
That's acceptable, um, Mayor Ford, it's just that, we just need another minute.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm not trying to rush, I just wanted to set the procedure upright. While we're waiting, I invite if, uh, Mr. Denny Andre, he is in the council chambers, if you would like to speak to this while we're crafting, you're welcome to speak.
Okay, uh, I might want to keep from here, or should I stand at the front?
Yeah, I'm in stand-up.
You're fine.
Okay. Um, I just came back, and I want to thank, thank you for council, uh, the Snowmobile Club, especially with the hotel being built. It's very important that we maintain the infrastructure, and, um, locally, we have 350 kilometers of trail, and that with the MNR today, to make sure that we're all up and going, because currently at the peak, um, I just came back from convention, and just so you know, Snowmobile brings in $6 billion a year in Ontario alone. So, and Horn Pain, everybody remembers them all, how it used to be full, so, that's why it's so important, so, and I'm trying to kind of, it kind of slid a little bit, but I think Horn Pain, we have a chance to come back as a, definitely a tourism destination, and I get text messages all winter long. I can't wait for a hotel, we want to come back, we love your trails, and, uh, so, yeah, we really appreciate the donation, and I've got great volunteers, so thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Denny, I appreciate the comments, and I want to thank you for being an ambassador for our community. And is there any further questions from council? I will give opportunity now. Okay, not seeing any, thank you again. How are we making out with the motion? We're almost there. Okay, great.
We need to know how much gravel.
Uh, I would pose that question to the Public Works Manager.
I have absolutely no idea.
What would be a, um, a submit, a sufficient amount, and then we can put it up to that amount? I, yes, go ahead, Councilor Peter Kistemaker.
And, does it have to be, doesn't it be gravel, it has to be filled basically, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So even like, you know, packing sand or something?
Uh, gravel would be better, because sand, the four-wheelers, it's, it's the summertime that takes most of the wear and tear, in the wintertime until it's the summer, and we want to make sure that our trails are year-round, even, they're not just four months a year, so, gravel, we would prefer, all right, we'll leave that to council, we'll decide.
Do you have a comment on that, Peter?
I don't, I, I.
To get across the bridge with five ton, anything larger than the top five ton wouldn't make it a cross, so even two or four loads.
How many yards?
A load, ten.
So, but it's.
Forty yards?
Forty yards, four loads?
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Okay, just, uh, just, um, I want to backtrack there a bit. How much does 40 yards, uh, monetary amount cost us? And does that make us a deficiency in what we need? I don't know how much 40 yards is, so please, uh, excuse my ignorance here.
I've got my numbers in front of me, I'll try to get close here.
I just want to ensure that we're not creating a deficiency.
Uh, 24, 2,500 bucks plus delivery charge, delivery charge on top of that. Crosses 2,400 with the gravel.
Maybe we can put a letter, Madam Mayor, into development construction for a donation on their side, too, being that we support them so much.
Okay, we could definitely do that. Do we want to do then 20 yards, and we'll ask them to provide the other 20? I think that's generous. Okay, does that give, does that help for the construction of the motion?
Just getting proofread one second.
Great, you, Jen.
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, and where will you be inserting that, uh, part of the motion, Jen?
I'll just be adding it to the end, as it be it finally resolved.
Be it finally resolved, okay, so then I can read through and then hand it over to you?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. So if I can get a mover and a seconder, please, move by councillor. Peter Kistemaker, second by coun, I'll put you as seconder councillor Ted Scheneman, if that's permissible?
Let's find that, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Whereas the Horn Pain Snowmobile Club is in the process of reviewing the integrity of its infrastructure in anticipation of the 2024 season, and whereas it has been determined but, that the bridge over Horn Pain Creek, which is used not only by snowmobilers, but also by UT, I think that's supposed to be ATVs? Or is it UTVs?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Pedestrians and dog walkers year-round is in need of repair. And whereas the work to the repair of this bridge will be done by donation of time of, by volunteers, and whereas the Horn Pain Snowmobile Club is asking for a financial donation of 2,000 to go toward the purchase of lumber and related supplies to complete the restoration of the Horn Pain Creek Bridge, therefore be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby authorize a donation to the Horn Pain Snowmobile Club to support the purchase of lumber and related supplies to complete the restoration of the Horn Pain Creek Bridge in the amount of $2,000. Be it further resolved that these funds will be expensed from the Community Wellbeing Reserve?
Be it finally resolved that council does hereby authorize an additional in-kind donation of 20 yards of egg gravel to this project.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion on the motion, council? There being none, to a vote, those in favor? And that is carried, not opposed. Okay, move on to item 10.2, is the Northern School of Medicine University-based funding. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please, move by councillor.
Hi.
Belinda Kistemaker, second by councillor.
Aye.
Ted Scheneman? Whereas the township of Horn Pain recognizes the urgent need for physicians in North Ontario as is, is experiencing shortage of trained physicians and specialist physicians, and whereas the life expectancy of northern residents is more than two years lower than the Ontario average, and mental health and addictions are four times higher, and whereas one in eight northern residents do not have access to a family doctor, and many must travel long distances to access healthcare services representing the failure of healthcare in northern Ontario. And whereas communities in northern Ontario require access to equitable healthcare, especially underserved rural indigenous and Francophone communities, and whereas in April of 2022, the government announced that unprecedented medical expansion for Naasum Medical, University's medical programs. And whereas current funding rates for the Northern School of Medicine University, Naasum, have been increased, sorry, have not been increased sufficiently to accommodate growth and expansion. Therefore be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby strongly request the provincial government grant Naasum University's request for a permanent increase in annual base funding by $4 million before the end of this fiscal year, so that it can continue to deliver on the mandate that the conservative government initially established in response to the needs of northern municipalities. Be it further resolved that a copy of this motion be forwarded to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honorable Sylvia Jones, Minister of Health and Deputy Premier, the Honorable Jill Dunlop, Minister of Colleges and Universities, MPPs Greg Rick, Vic Fidelli, George Perry, Ross Romano, Kevin Holland, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO, the Northern Ontario School of Medicine, Naasum, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, PHNOM, the Northern Ontario Academic Medicine Association, and the leaders of the opposition parties of Ontario. Any discussion on the motion? I do have one, um, discussion item is just, the MPPs that are listed within the be it further resolved are ministers, and I think we should have their titles in there. Um, because Minister Rickford is the Minister of Northern Development, Vic Fidelli is the Minister of Economic Development, George Perry is the Minister of Mines, Ross Romano, and Kevin Holland, I believe, are assistants. I just think it would be prudent to add their titles in the resolution, in the motion.
We can do that, Mayor Ford, of course, yeah.
Okay, perfect. And the other discussion item, if you notice in the package, there was a letter that was also in support of this, and it can come from the mayor, and I would like council consensus, if we'd like to do that as well, send the letter along with the resolution. I'm seeing consensus on that. Councillor Scheneman, yes?
Yes, certainly, Madam.
Okay, great. So if there's no further discussion on that motion, I'll put it to a vote, those in favor? That is carried. 10.3. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please, move by councillor.
Aye.
Ted Scheneman, second by councillor. Uh, Peter Kistemaker, I think I saw your hand, yes? Whereas the Housing Affordability Task Force delivered a report outlining recommendations to help Ontario tackle the housing supply crisis and build at least 1.5 million homes by 2031. And whereas the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, MMAH, is in the process of renewing and where possible, implementing the recommendations in the report. And whereas, in order to better understand the priorities of small rural and northern communities, the MMAH has requested that council rank what they perceive to be the top five recommendations that they feel would be or have been the most useful in increasing housing supply in the township. And whereas the chart must be submitted by Octo, Monday, October 16th, 2023, therefore be it resolved that council does hereby rank the following recommendations to be submitted to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. And we have a choice, I'm turning to page. Page, it's, uh, page 108, 107, 108, and nine of your package.
Get more in there.
Other questions? Sorry, go ahead, Councilor Belinda Kistemaker.
Well, I thought I just started off, I thought 37 was a good number.
Okay. 37, provide funding to increase staffing, adjudicators and case managers provide market competitive salaries, outsource more mediators, and set order time targets. Is that the one?
I think so, yes.
I would agree. I'm sorry, I'm looking down, so if the council wants to speak, just say your name, please.
Councillor Cheniman, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, councillor Cheniman.
I had number 45 and number 48. Number 45 being align property taxes for purpose-built rental with those of condos and low-rise homes. And 48 calling the federal government to implement an urban, rural, northern indigenous housing strategy.
Okay, thank you for that.
I'm down there.
Yeah, go ahead, councillor Belinda Kissmaker.
I think we can't use number 48 because it's already been starred.
Yes, I was just looking at the, I was just going to the asterisk meeting and I couldn't find it. It's bracketed at the top that recommendations within asterisks have been implemented. That was 48, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we have 37 and 45.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, councillor Cheniman.
Number 54, or 46, undertake multi-stakeholder education program to promote skilled tra- oh, that's asterisk too, sorry. At least we get something in, well.
Councillor Kissmaker, Belinda, go ahead.
I was looking at 49, funding for cloud projects that create innovative pathways to homeownership. I thought that might be something.
49?
Yeah.
I do have a question about item number 47. And I'm not sure if the treasurer can answer. It says eliminate or reduce tax disincentives to housing growth. Would that help our community at all?
I'm not sure what that means.
Yeah, okay, you're with me. I was wondering as well. I do have another question for item number seven. I believe that we already have the permitting building allowing that in our about renting rooms within a dwelling. Do we, we have that allowable in our official plan? Go ahead, Eileen.
I was just gonna say, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure, Mayor Fort.
I think number eight might be good for our municipality. Our whole municipality might be incentivized because we're all close to the schools.
So we have so far 37, 49, 45, and eight. Do you think item number 69 would benefit growth in our community? I would, I would want this rebate to come from the province, not from the municipality. Oh, you know what it is? I think we found it. It's 50. Sorry, go ahead. Did someone have their hand up? 50 is provide provincial and federal loan guarantees for purpose-built rental, affordable rental and affordable ownership projects. And is it permissible to council that I read out the numbers? And will in, the staff will insert the actual written material there when I read out the motion? I'm seeing consensus? Yes, thank you. Okay, so continuing the reading of the motion. One would be 37, two would be 49, three would be 45, four would be eight, and five would be 50. Any further discussion on that motion? My one question is, they did write this letter in to head of council, and I'm wondering if we can forward this information to our housing, Horn Payne Housing as well, for their submission? We do have a meeting next week. So if there's no further discussion, I'll put that motion to a vote, those in favor. And that is carried, not opposed. Okay, moving on to information correspondence, sorry, correspondence information only. If I can get a mover and a second or to acknowledge receipt, move by councillor. Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that the council, corporation, the township of Horn Payne does hereby acknowledge receipt of the correspondence information only package attached to the agenda of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, October 4th, 2023. And Eileen, you had a few that you would like to speak to in this information only?
Yes, I just wanted to bring to council's attention items 11.2. This is again the Ministry of Transportation's approval for the township's bylaw number 1862. And that just shows the email from the ministry and just attaching the documents from the ministry. For 11.4, I just wanted to mention, sorry, that there, I believe, Mayor Fort, you had a question in the agenda review about what was the increase. And I can advise that the increase, there was an increase of $5,891 for the year and $491 for the month from 2023 to 2024.
Okay, thank you.
And the next item that I wanted to bring to council's attention was 11.6, the livable cities reports. These are just two samples of what kind of reports staff can kind of get from the information, the data that is given by the noise and camera sensors. And a few of these reports will also be shared with the OPP as it is really, it'll be really informative for them as well. And that one will probably be, it will be the enforcement report that's attached. The next item that I'd like to speak to is 11.9. I just wanted to bring to council's attention. Noma and PHNOMs, these are their items that they discussed at the AMO conference this year. And the last item is just 1112, Ministry of Health, just about the new COVID-19 vaccinations.
Thank you, Eileen. Thank you. Any further discussion on any of those items in 11 in informational? I just want to highlight the favorable response from 11.5 from AMO delegation that held by councillor Peter Kissmaker and CAO Eileen Singh. And just building that working relationship into the future for our Hallmark Centre, that area. And those were my comments. If there's no further comments, I'll put that acknowledged receipt to a vote, those in favor. And that is opposed. Okay, moving on to item number 12, this committee and board update. If I could get a mover and a second or to acknowledge receipt of my meetings, moved by councillor Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Ted Cheniman. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the mayor's meetings August and September 2023 as prepared by Mayor Cheryl Fort. Is there any questions or comments on those meetings for myself? There being none, I put that to a vote, those in favor. And that is carried. Okay, item number 12.2 is council committee updates, and we'll do a roundtable. Councillor Belinda Kissmaker.
On September 16th, I attended a meeting in Dorian for the Thunder Bay District Municipal League. A couple of things that come out of that was, they were talking about qualified chief building officials in northwestern Ontario, the lack of. And they were trying to maybe start a list so they can share that information. So I thought that was a good thing to. The other thing they talked about was, there's one community that started a junior firefighter program. And I thought that was interesting. It was for, it starts at the age of 14. So I thought, I was hoping Miles was here tonight, so might be something to look at. Then also in Manitowage, they've also started a four-day work week. They have, where you work 10 hours a day, the fifth day they're off and they're, and apparently it's working for them. So I thought you guys would be interested in seeing how that works out. Then on Saturday, last Saturday, I went to the Algoma District Municipal Association meeting in Wawa, and that one was interesting too, because they were talking about, they had a presentation done by Bev Nantel for Dugreville and Melanie Malone, she did, she's the mayor of Wawa. Anyways, they did a presentation together on how mining has impacted their community. So it was really good to listen to what has happened in that area. And basically, the bottom line is be careful what you wish for. So it was really good. They are also, at both conferences that I went to, or both meetings, I should say, they're also talking about the youth being on council. And they're basically starting at grade six, and they have maybe like two, two meetings a year or something that they participate in, or they participate. So that seems to be coming up a lot more at events that I've been at, so I thought I would bring that forward. Another concern was desplinol milk is an issue. Basically, no one knows how that's going to impact, but it is going to impact all the way up around here as well. So I think they're looking to do a presentation on that one next. That's with the Algoma District. And then last night, I attended the Nagami Forest Local Citizens Committee meeting. One of the employees from First Resource Management Group, Shelley, she is resigning, and her last day is on October 27th. There's two people, Bree and Jeff, they're stepping in for her at this time. Basically, we talked, she gave a presentation last night about the number of cheese that were planted, which was around a million in this area. There was 1,000 hectares of areas sprayed this year. And they talked about they're having a burn plan coming up, which was in our correspondence. And they also said that the White River burn was canceled. So I guess they were supposed to do something there, and they canceled that right now. Moose hunt came up. Basically is, we used to have red zones, red zone areas put up. They don't do that basically anymore unless you, well, unless you apply for it and you have a certain amount of time to apply. One thing that we did stress was we thought that we should at least have men at work signs put up to protect the employees that are working in the bush. So. And that's about it. And yeah, and then Trevor, he gave us an update on what the sawmill was up to, so it was interesting. And that's about it.
Thank you, Belinda. And so the LCC is going to put up men at work signs, or who will be putting those up?
There, the forestry company, it sounds like they're gonna try and put something up. Usually, apparently the worker, the contractors do put signs out, but we wanted to stress that it would be a good idea, so.
Yes, for sure, for sure. Thank you for that update. And for the Manitowage four-day work week, I wonder if we reach out to Manitowage and see if they can put that on the your mayor's group. Reach out to Heidi and have that, ask them to do a presentation and get all the community involved. I can do that. I'll reach out to Heidi and ask her. Question for the junior firefighter program, was Andrea going to disseminate that information to all the NOMA members?
Well, this was with the Thunder Bay, something, yeah. It's something that we can ask a little bit, fine, for sure.
Right, it's not Andrea there, it's, what's her name?
Nikita.
Nikita, that's right. Okay, thank you for that, councillor Kissamaker. Moving on, councillor Peter Kissamaker.
I have nothing added at this moment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ted Chenaman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Busy meeting at the hospital board this week, and again, major financial decisions that are going to have to be made. Primarily, the agency nursing that is just costing horrendous amounts of money, and there's no end to it. To the point that regular nurses have said, why would I move to a contract position when I can work for an agency and pretty well double my income and work less time? So that's been there. So that's, so there's upcoming discussion on direct wages at all levels of the hospital, as well as union negotiations that are going on. And we, our contract staff have been tied since 2010 with no wage increase. So that's coming up, where that's going to be probably released or at least be challenged. So there's going to be some, some major budget concerns. We began discussions on succession planning, as CEO Heather Jeremy has announced that she will be retiring soon. Dr. Cameron has updated that he was able, or has been able to make sure that we have coverage to the middle of January. So that is a good thing. And it was also duly noted that by our population, we should have three physicians. And we have one, and then the locums. So we should probably, if at some point, maybe consider reaching out to Dr. Cameron and giving a huge shout out, shout out for the work that he does to, primarily, he's the one that would make sure that we have coverage to make sure that he doesn't get burned out. And also, we were in receipt of a letter from the CEO of the hospital regarding the communications breakdown, that we will be on our agenda at a future council meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all.
Okay, thank you, councillor Chenaman. Just one question for you, what would be your suggestion on doing a shout out to Dr. Cameron? What was your, what is your thoughts behind that?
I think, I think just a letter, just, yeah, just a letter, just to support and encouragement. I'm not sure what his years of service is, somebody told me 1999, is that close?
That's exactly it, June 1999.
Okay, I definitely can do that. Thank you, councillor Chenaman. Other than the update from the meetings that are listed, I want to, from our town hall meeting, we had quite a discussion, as you remember, about ambulance service. So I have met with residents about that. And then I set up a meeting with Keith Bell and the head of the ambulance division at ADSAP, Jeff, and we had a sit-down on the 25th of December, face-to-face in Thessalon. And we had a really good discussion, we went at it as a win-win, like how can we get the communities to help? What, what are all the issues? And they have been working in the background, trying to deal with the labor shortage and some of the things that are occurring that we don't necessarily see. One of the items that was brought forward was that Sioux St. Marie, the city of Sioux St. Marie doubled their paramedics over the last couple of years, which had drawn a lot of the Algoma paramedics out of our area into the city. But they're, they are trying everything, they've done some innovative video work, which you'll see into the future. I also did request previous to our town hall meeting, at the last board meeting, that each community meet with the CEO and the head of the ambulance department individually, plus invite any community members that they would want at that table to discuss the issue of community of Duberville, White River, and Horn Pain. And Keith Bell was really open to that, so that's going to be coming as well. And I have set up a meeting between our three communities, and this, with the mayors and the CAO coming up to discuss this as well. I don't think it's something that we can drop, it needs to be continued, and it may come. I did also, I did also mention to Keith as well that any ways that municipalities can help through resolutions or in supporting this, even possibly joint delegations, whatever we can do to support. Because really, it, it has to be defeating to be a paramedic if you don't have the capacity to do your job with another employee, or you're feeling like you can't give sufficient care because your, your hands are tied and, and it's beyond your control. So I think there's, it's a very complex situation that's happening. And, but I was, I'm really thankful that everyone on board is helpful and wants to be part of the solution. And I have to give a shout out, we started a community retention and attraction last year, just because of our own high school having issues trying to find teachers. And we've had active participation from ADSAP for the ambulance. And, and we have another meeting coming up in November. And, you know, so there are, they are trying to listen and get input from each of the communities as well. So I thought it was a hopeful meeting. I will keep council abreast of what's happening, especially after the upcoming meeting I have with the other three communities. And at any time, if there's any situation regarding the ambulance situation or any of those items, you're welcome to email me, just put it in the subject line for any further information or something that you think of at any time, please do that, council. Well, it seems like we've had a pretty active September, so I don't think, I don't think the winter is going to be any slower. Okay, so no further discussion on committee updates. We'll continue on with conferences. If I can get a mover and a second to discuss, moved by councillor. Second by Peter Kissamaker, I saw your hand, yes, okay. 2024 Annual Conference Closer to Home to be Held from Sunday, January 21st to Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024 in Toronto, Ontario. And this item is on our agenda, the early bird is going to be open at 8:00. Close, and to ensure that the staff has enough time to make accommodations for us. And I open up the floor for council. And I do ask, Eileen, do you have a staff that would be going?
We don't have one designated as of yet, I could go if needed.
Okay, thank you. And I open up the floor to council. I'm not sure who in the past has gone to Roma before. Are we able to defer this to our next meeting on the 18th? When is the cutoff?
I believe it opens up on October 27th.
Okay, so we do have some time. Would you like to defer this item? And people can look at their schedule, can discuss, okay. So I'll put the motion on the floor with deferred, and then I ask to defer the motion. Those in favor to defer. And that is carried. Okay, moving on to new and other business, is item 14.1, is Seed Homes Affordable Housing? If I can get a mover and a second, please, moved by councillor. Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Ted Chenaman. Whereas, the state of affordable housing has been identified as a need in the Township of Horn Pain, Needs and Demands Study, and where it's committed to finding long-term sustainable solutions to close the gaps in the housing continuum by diversifying housing stocks and creating more affordable housing options to residents. And whereas through the Township of Horn Pain's official OP zoning bylaws, ZBL, and the upcoming Community Improvement Plan, CIP, council will be prepared for development and investment. Therefore, be it resolved that the Corporation of the Town of Horn Pain does hereby authorize the CAO clerk and the Horn Pain Housing Corporation as needed to engage with companies to meet growth prospects and housing needs. Any discussion on this motion? I would like to give some background, so Seed Homes reached out to me, and you can see in the draft letter of intent template, the, to have a letter of intent. And because we have not had a presentation from them or further discussion at council table, the HHC had met with the president of Seed Homes, along with the administrator of the HHC. But I did see the benefit of having a broad resolution that any company could use for showing our interest in ensuring our housing stock increases and that we are actively ready to engage. So hence why this motion is on the table today. And I would also suggest that we invite Seed Homes to do a presentation to us in the near future. I was, I had suggested possibly November 1st, if that's permissible for them, or another meeting date that's allowed, that works for them after November 1st. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, I'll put the motion to the vote, and then we can see if we want to have a presentation. Those in favor? That is carried. And would we like to invite Seed Homes to a meeting?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you for that, council. Okay, moving on to bylaws. And I want to thank the staff for correcting me during our agenda meeting. Repeal, repeal is listed many times in this section. And I was a bit confused, thank you, Melissa and Eileen and Jeff. Okay, if I can get a mover and a second, please, moved by councillor. Second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker, be resolved that bylaw number 2029 being a bylaw to repeal bylaw number 235, by law number 277, Aqua Declarination Project be hereby read a first and second time, considered read a third time in final pass. And Eileen, do you want to speak to this before I come to the vote?
I can just advise that Aqua, sorry, I have my notes here, that Aqua advised us to repeal these bylaws as per, so sorry, their instructions. And we're waiting for a new agreement from Aqua regarding the new chemical de-coronation option, which will then be brought back to council.
Thank you, Eileen. Other questions or comments on that? Seeing none, I put it to both those in favor. That is carried and opposed. Okay, we're going to be moving into a closed session. And I would like to pass the closed session, but then have a 10-minute break before opening the closed. So if I can get a mover and a second for 17.1, moved by council, councillor.
Aye.
Ted Chenaman, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker, Belinda, you have to hand up?
Yep.
Okay. Be it resolved that the next portion of the meeting at 7:39 PM be closed to the public in order to discuss personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communication necessaries for that purpose, and a position plan, criteria or instructions to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board pursuant to section 239-2BFK of the Municipal Act 2001. Those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, council. So Eileen, I'll be on the closed link at 7:50.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, sounds good.
If I can get a mover and a second or to return open, please move by Councilor Peter Kistemaker, second by Councilor Ted Cheniman. Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation, the Township of Horn Pain, but does hereby return to open council at 8:51 PM. Those in favor? And that is carried and opposed. Okay, we do have business arising from the closed session. So we have the appointment for the Community Development Advisory Committee. If I can get a mover and a second or please move by Councilor.
Aye.
Cheniman, second by Councilor Peter Kistemaker. Be it be it resolved that council does hereby appoint the following to the Township of Horn Pain Community Development Advisory Committee, C-Doc, Amanda Drury, Brienne Mackey, Chantel Hickey and Lorraine Stefanic. Those in favor? And that is carried. We had further discussion about the Operations Advisory Committee. We do have the Operations Advisory Committee, the OAC, up for applications until Friday, October 20th at 2:00 PM. We are looking for four candidates for this committee. And this committee encompasses the Waste Management Committee, the cemetery, and any operational advice through to council from this committee, from the both committees actually. But what we want to see, and we had this discussion, the council is in all agreement, that we want to hear what the committees have to say. We want to utilize the committees. We spoke about this at the Town Hall meeting as well, that we need to have community support and more intelligence at the table when we're making decisions and have that advice from our community. So we ask you to apply. We look forward to seeing the first one get off the ground and their meetings. And we would like to see those agendas and items that were ongoing before the COVID pandemic, with the Waste Management Committee especially, to continue on so that we can see those things come to fruition for our community. So please apply again. It's from until Friday, October 20th at 2:00 PM. And we look forward to seeing your application and having another appointment motion coming forward for that committee. The other matters discussed in closed session are going to continue for discussion. There's no further update at this time. So moving on with our open agenda, we have the adjournment. If I can get a mover and a secondary for a second for the confirmatory, please move by Councilor Peter Kistemaker, second by Councilor Ted Cheniman. Be it resolved that by law number 2030 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at their regular meeting held on Wednesday, October 4th, 2023, be hereby read a first and second time and be considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor? And that is carried, not opposed. And our adjournment moved by Councilor Belinda Kistemaker, second by Councilor.
Aye.
Cheniman, be it resolved that council does hereby adjourn this regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, October 4th, 2023 at 8:54 PM. Those in favor? That is carried. Well, thank you, council. Have a good night, everyone.
Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Bye.